Ordinance number sixteen thirty-one, amending chapter eight point oh eight of abandoned use code addressing vegetation and removing exemptions for course and other prohibited vegetation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this idea has been before you a few times before. It's also been through our planning commission in a few public hearings. We've had multiple opportunities to look at our existing ordinance as it pertains to vegetation and noxious weeds or prohibited vegetation. There are various names associated with those things. We brought before you last month proposal to take a look at modifying chapter eight point oh eight, section one forty, vegetation, and also section one fifty, which we now call prohibited vegetation. This proposal was looked at by members of the county, the county attorney's office, county planning office, the weed board, by members of the force action group, our staff here internally. We crafted this up with a few minor amendments to what you saw last month, which basically take place under eight point oh eight, one fifty. The first paragraph was added prohibited vegetation shall be any plant classified as a noxious weed. So there was kind of a definition there. The last sentence on paragraph B specifically prohibited vegetation shall include those plants identified as T designated weeds. We also added paragraph E, which is basically a line, prohibited vegetation must be removed in all areas. And I think most people that have taken a look at this have been in agreement with its amendment. We have had some comments from members of the community that are concerned about the extent that this ordinance revision goes to removing all exemptions for course throughout the community. And we do have Will Bailey and others here that are dealing with this issue in the community. As we had our city council, joint council, and planning commission meeting, it was discussed that if we are going to get serious about removing course, we have to get serious about removing course. And we can't allow exemptions here and exemptions here that allow to continue to propagate. Right now exemptions allow course to be used as a hedge, and you can see it all over the community. It allows course to be no more than twelve inches tall, and you can see it all over the community. We're doing nothing to help reduce the amount of course in the community. We're just managing it and watching it continue to grow. So I agree that this is a step that seems to be maybe extreme in our ability to deal with course. However, the plan is to cultivate an atmosphere of compliance rather than enforcement. We are looking heavily to the course action group to be the experts in this community. It's a agglomeration of thirty-five federal, state, local agencies, experts of all varieties in course removal and other noxious vegetation. We have the leadership here in the community that can be resources to community members who are trying to figure out how to deal with course on their properties. We are not looking at enforcing this ordinance until probably January of two thousand and twenty. Once the council approves this ordinance, we will work with county to come to an agreement with them that will come back to the city council to allow the city to enforce this ordinance in the urban growth boundaries, primarily in the donut hole, which is probably the greatest fire risk to the city that we have of uncontrolled course. The county would basically adopt this same language as a part of their ordinance, and then allow the city to enforce it in those specific areas. In looking ahead at beginning compliance efforts in January of two thousand and twenty, we want to spend the next six months in a comprehensive education program. And members of the course action group are here to echo some of these comments. But we understand that there's a lot of anxiety concerning course and how can it remove down the bluff and the cost that it may incur. And we want to make sure that the community residents know that they have resources to assist them with that. And that what we're looking at are plans for property compliance that we can follow, that they develop with assistance to remove course. So essentially, if you have any questions, if you'd like to call others in the audience.
Well, I would like to take into consideration, I mean, we have discussed this. I understand the hedges, I understand the donut hole, twelve inches, but these people who live on the bluff out there and have, and the course may be holding, stabilizing their bluff, I am concerned about that.
Well, but didn't this state, or the state came in last year and didn't go Kokeel Point?
They did do that. And does that seem to...
It's unstable.
Will that be the guideline, Will, or whoever's, whoever's going to help us here? I forwarded on to Will that some of we got email from Dr. Martin in his life and from the Hamsons who live out on the bluff and their concern.
Yeah, I'm Will Bailey, I'm chair in the county noxious weed board, and my address is eight nine five six eight Sunny Blue Lane. Yeah, we have been over the years trying to look at what's been done on bluffs as well as conduct our own projects on bluff areas. Here, abandoned Kokeel Point is the prime example where for two years now, following hand removal as well as mechanical removal, where we can safely operate machinery to mow and grind up and mulch the course. We've had to use hand crews, and in the case of Kokeel Point, we use the work crews from Shutter Creek Correctional Facility. And in the areas where it's so steep, we can't operate machinery, that's what we have to do. But the approach we're taking is we're not pulling course out. We are leaving it in place. We are cutting it down so that it can slowly grow back. But in the meantime, what we're doing is we're planting competitive grasses, native grasses, ryegrass, pescus, clove, to outcompete the horse. At the same time, we're going in and we're applying very selective herbicide, trichlorophyll. We are not using Roundup. I think there's a misconception that we're advocating the use of Roundup, which kills everything. We don't want that. We want the grasses to survive because the grasses are going to stabilize the bank. And over a period of years, we can go in with hand sprayers, small amount of herbicide, and hit the course as it starts to grow back. Also, by that approach, we leave the whole root structure in place. And that allows the grasses then to take over, and their root structure will stabilize the banks. So this is the approach we took at Kokeel Point. We're doing it down at Harris Beach, at Brookings. State parks have been successful out in Bullards Beach on the dunes, taking this approach. So we are learning what is working on steep slopes. We're certainly not going to advocate anything that's going to cause, you know, immediate slope failure and the loss of any of the bluffs out along the beach with the...
Well, it's going to be an educational process, as both you and Robert mentioned today when I forwarded emails to you, it's going to be an educational process.
Yeah, and we are learning. We're also watching what they're doing in Australia, New Zealand, where course is as big and not a bigger problem here. So the course action group is pulling together all the best management practices and the things that around the world we have learned are most successful in dealing with course in a whole variety of situations. And our demonstration plots down south of Currie Dale show you the results of different approaches, different herbicides, over different periods of time, and what the success is that we see using these different techniques. So we are gearing up. Rachelle Settlemeyer is the Course Projects Coordinator with the Kokeel Watershed Association. She will be coordinating a lot of the public outreach workshops, trainings, and so forth that we plan to put on, starting in the very near future.
I was hoping that maybe Christine and that thing, she would be here.
I think the main concern that the property owners out there have is, obviously, you know, it's got to be hand cut because a lot of it's inaccessible with machinery, unless they can actually bring it in on the beach, which probably can't happen. Obviously, the herbicide thing. But also, you know, it's going to be very expensive for them to hire. I mean, they just can't go out and hire the inmate crew.
Well, the inmate crews cannot work on private property.
Right. So, you know, are there actually, I know we've got a list of contractors and stuff, but they actually have people with them?
We now have two contractors that do manual removal. And we're hoping to encourage more businesses to develop that will address a course in a manual way. I mean, we have a number of equipment operators, but yes.
Will, she wants you to turn.
Could you face the camera a little bit? Well, also, I buy site for being a real manufacturer, three fifty Ackerman, and I also work for Coos Community Media Center, which I have been contacted by Rachelle to do a training video that we will be filming next week. So it'll be available on the internet for residents and lawn maintenance and, what was it, contractors?
Contractors, contractors are invited, but also city workers.
But it will be accessible because everything that I record is available online. So not only will people be able to log on to that and see it, they'll be able to attach that to their website, along with abandoned, and they do do that. So residents are going to be able to learn, be educated, know exactly what type of plants to use, where to get them. I mean, she's been so informative and amazing, so I'm really looking forward to next week being able to come and tape that training class that's going to be available. And I think that it's going to be really educational, plus it's going to be a free outlet for people to be able to educate not only just in abandoned, but throughout all the counties in Oregon. So just to, you know, to intervene.
Thank you.
There were two other things that they're concerned about. A main one being, you know, the last attempt that we had at this, they got a nasty letter from somebody saying, "Cut the course over there, fine." It's just not a good PR, you know, method to, you know, get people to work with you. So you've got to figure out a way to, in hindsight, that was...
I think that a lot of people just don't even know really what it is. Or, I mean, I look at it and I'm like, is that correct? I seriously don't know some type of...
I think most people...
Well, I'm saying that some people don't know. If you're a renter or that sort of thing, you may not know some of the plants that are growing in your community. I mean, I own my home, but seriously, some people may not know.
And the other one was, okay, what was the other one? Oh, Chris Maring's letter, the wildlife. She says there's a lot of wildlife that lives in that stuff. And so I can just see where some environmentalists might go. Well, you're displacing this animal or whatever. I mean, is that going to be involved?
Not if it's taken in sections and replaced with indigenous plants.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I agree.
Just answer your first question. The course action group did not send that out.
Well, I know, I'm just...
That was the same.
I know, and I'm just saying, I just hope we have a different approach.
I think definitely we will have a different approach.
Robert, do we have a prominent link on our homepage of our website to the course actions? If you promise, when you hit the page, you can see it.
Our website doesn't allow those prominent links, but we do have connections to that website. And we are...
On our homepage?
Yeah, up on the, you have to find it. We can put things in the news, and we'll just keep putting them, we put it on the ribbon on top. But as was mentioned, we have a training here. We've scheduled our city staff for training next Tuesday afternoon. And contractors are invited and others, and that will be filmed. We'll be able to use that.
Yeah, we're trying to encourage a number of the landscape and gardening contractors to advertise in the coffee break. We're trying to encourage them to come and participate in that training. It's not only just course, but all noxious weeds, so that they know what knotweed looks like, and they're not out there mowing that weed.
You can respond to her question. I don't have a question, but I care about the comment. And Robert and I discussed this recently. I think it's extremely important that if you have a lot of course, and totally if that course is in a fragile area where you could lose a bank when the course goes, you need to do some very careful planning about what takes place and when it takes place. For instance, when you are going to treat for a course after it's been cut, when you are going to plant something that will assist you in holding a particular area, and all these things should be coordinated ahead of time, not after the fact, when you're, you've got a bare spot where there used to be protection, and the rains start, and you haven't had time to get seed in or do other kinds of mitigation things. So it's extremely important to educate yourself through the course action people and any other possibilities thoroughly before you get started and do it right.
The biggest problem we have at abandoned, as we know, is information meetings, public meetings. We've been through it, we've been there, people don't come. We've got to have a better way of reaching the public.
If I may for a second, we met last week, members of the course action group, myself, to talk about this next six-month period while we move these ordinances through. And we talked about things like that, you know, we need to have things in the newspapers and the coffee breaks and on the websites. But we also need to have, you know, maybe some coffee clashes or some science posts like we do from time to time. We need to have training like this. We need to do videos so people can see them from time to time, whenever they want to do that. And that's where the idea of videotaping this next training came in. We want to not just have to keep training, keep training, keep training because people don't come, but have a resource that they can go see the training anytime. Maybe they can do it at nine-thirty at night, one o'clock in the morning, you know, but they have access to that information.
Wherever they go, it's going to have to be very easy access. We have a lot of elderly people, and they use their computers to keep up the grand kids. So if they're going to go to a website, it's going to be really easy for them to find, or they just won't, they won't do it. They won't even click on anything unless it's really easy.
Facebook.
Well, my mother doesn't even do Facebook.
I do want to show people, last month I challenged Will to bring some knotweed because most people have never heard of knotweed. Well, there are two different kinds of knotweed. It's extremely invasive. He was going to bring it to me and put it right here so I wouldn't say it was in my bouquet he was giving me, but then I wouldn't be able to see out through it. There it is.
I hope I'm not allergic to this stuff.
I know.
That's why I was going to do.
In front of the camera, this is not, it's not for me.
I already zoomed in on it a couple times.
This is one of the noxious weeds, Robert mentioned, the T-list. The county maintains a noxious weed list. The T-list are the target or the highest priority weeds. And obviously, by far and away, course is number one. But this is starting to invade in pockets around that. This is very difficult to eradicate. And one little root fragment or stem fragment will start a whole new plant. So you can't go out there and mow and plack this, or you're just going to spread, spread it everywhere.
Will, you didn't, it really helps if you talk toward the camera, because then they, I mean, not that you have to, but, but there, people up here are asking where knotweed is. And I want to tell them to go up the Oregon Avenue Hill like you're going to go to Catholic church, and you look to the left, and you will see this stuff. It's probably high level.
This is a variety of smaller ones, which you can't really see.
It's that one. Right before it, right before the abandoned end.
Not weed. And it's at the back entrance to abandoned end. It's on vacant property. We're trying to work with the homeowner to make sure they understand that this is a real problem. They mowed it down last year, and it's all run bad. Now, we sprayed it at the foot of Oregon Avenue, right across from the marketplace, and that is all dead. What did you spray it with? We sprayed it with Amazapir, which is a very selective herbicide.
All right, Will Bailey, now you're not, now not only does the camera not see you, but my stuff.
I can smell it.
K N O T.
No. It's K N O T.
Oh, my God, he was saying that. Will, does this plant flowers?
Yes. And one of the reasons it's broad here is because it has a very pretty white flower, and people plant it as an ornamental.
Okay, guys, I think...
Be aware of it, that's one thing at a time, right?
Of course.
Yeah.
I think we're going to try to do this thing.
You're the one that made me miss it.
I know, it's all my fault. Thank you. Okay, you, I think maybe it's time to get this started. I think education's going to play a big role in a lot of this stuff from hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I move to approve ordinance numbers.
Can somebody make her comment?
Oh, okay. Well, I thought here, come on up.
It's okay. Not above the hearing, I have no objection to it.
No, it can come up. I just thought that people that, I thought that's why you were here, but...
Well, that's why I'm here. Wood Sable, six ninety C New Court, abandoned. And I just, I agree that course removal is a valid and reasonable solution for reducing the chances of another major course fire. And I understand the need for a program that will reduce the related fire load. But this one-size-fits-all ordinance solution seems to prevent any flexibility for special situations, special solutions for special situations, where total removal could cause some unexpected negative consequences. And both, you've discussed that, okay? The slope. Have you received my letter with photographs?
No.
Why not? I don't understand. I submitted it to, I submitted it to the council by the fourteenth. It's not in the packet.
I've never seen it.
Before you get angry and get carried away about this, we are trying to address that concern. The approach now is to work with property owners with that slope issue. There is no, we're going to find you right away. We're trying to work in compliance. So before it becomes adversarial, know that we're just trying to solve a problem.
I understand that. Like I've mentioned, I think it's an understandable problem, and it should be addressed. But if you read the ordinance, it doesn't seem like there's any flexibility in those areas. But anyway...
That's an interpretation. I don't necessarily...
Okay, it's an interpretation.
I think that the focus of the ordinance is to have an individual plan for each property so those unique situations can be addressed.
Okay, well, there's nothing in writing. Okay, so I'll accept that, just listening to all of you, okay? I would like to know how much public comment. You mentioned that there's been hearings. I was in a planning commission meeting on November fifteenth last year, and I asked to speak on the course issue because it was on the agenda. I was told, "Don't bother now, there'll be a hearing." Oh, well, no. They said, "Don't bother now, it's not the right time." And I asked, "So there'll be a hearing?" And I was told, "Yes." Okay? Then, about several weeks ago, when I realized this thing was moving along, fine, I contacted the city and asked, "Will there be a hearing on this ordinance?" And I was told by one member of the staff, "Anytime there's an amendment to an ordinance, it calls for a hearing." Okay, so I was waiting for the hearing. Then I read the May twenty-third, well, I was at the meeting on the twenty-second, and on the twenty-third, it came up in the planning commission that, no, there's no need for a hearing because it's not a zoning issue. I would just like to say that it was confusing, okay? The background information in the ordinance may not be implemented like they said till two thousand and twenty. And then the education begins now, I guess. Would you think that the education might come before the ordinance? I'm just throwing that out. I guess not.
The divorce action group has been working for a long time. How?
Ten years.
Ten years. So I think there is an effort to reach out to the community, and if you have some advice or you have concerns, all of these recommendations were put together by the people that have studied the issue for a long time. So we're just trying to solve a problem with the recommendations we're given. I would definitely talk to those two people and get involved in that process to help develop. If there's a specific concern that you have with your particular property, it might be specific to your property, but it still needs to be addressed in that group.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to get some assurance that this ordinance, there is some flexibility in it, the way every line is treated.
Well, you heard, you heard what Will said about how the over the bluff was handled. And I don't think any of us really realized that the hand cutting, there are things that could be done to leave the roots. And that was one of the main concerns that we had were, until you've seen, I know you have, you've only been here maybe twenty-five years or something, but until you've seen the kind of fires around in the late fifties over there.
And I don't, you know, I don't want to see those fires either. And I want to do everything I can on my property without destabilizing my slope. And I had provided photographs.
May I ask who just delivered them?
I delivered them to you through your receptionist at the desk by the fourteenth. Because I delivered them at twelve.
Something got messed in. Well, it certainly was not delivered. We're not...
Well, I didn't think it was, but I'm just disheartened that you didn't get to see these photographs of the slope damage on the project, demonstration project across from my house.
I would prefer not to vote on this issue until we see those photographs.
We, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I'm saying that we need to move this process along because we need to have county on board.
That's right.
This is, the slope issue is not the major concern right now. It's a donut hole, just we don't have any control over. That is why we need to move this process.
The reason we need to move this forward with are things like the donut hole.
I understand that.
That place catches fire and, God help us.
I understand all that. I'm just making a comment on...
Be reassured, be reassured that we are going to work with the individual property owners to see what can be done. And we're not going to compromise the integrity of the, of slope by doing it.
Okay.
It's a problem that we've had for a hundred years now.
Do you have your comments on it?
We're not going to solve it until, so...
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, one quick comment.
I would like to know where this, my letter, it had pictures.
We'll chase that down.
We'll chase it down and move it into a...
I want to come to the slope, you have very unique properties, and there are shoreline overlay zones, and there are a lot of other regulations that prohibit, prohibit certain types of activities there, or even removing certain types of things. So each property is unique, and those areas will require special attention, and they're not going to be the ones that are attacked first. I mean, they, they need to be addressed, they need to be...
The other, sorry, the other thing I'd like to point out that Will mentioned is that there's a lot of new technology that they're developing on these other continents that we can bring you there. So as we start to tackle this problem, we're going to have new tools to use.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, and I will assume that my concerns have been somewhat, thank you. Your time.
Okay, Madam Mayor, wait a minute.
Someone put up that was red.
My name's Randy Swartman, and I live at five four two three six Rule Road. That's in the urban growth boundary called Sunset City, which is just south of abandoned city limits. And, you know, what I'm hearing here, you're saying that there's flexibility in how you're dealing with this from property to property, then put it in the ordinance that there's some flexibility. flexibility. I have read the proposed ordinance, and it does not sound like there's any flexibility. And we all dread someone coming along who is, you know, very strictly minded, shall we say, that they're going to enforce everything, and that flexibility could disappear. So, put it in the ordinance, there is some flexibility. Now, I'm not a big fan of gorse. We bought our property here in Bandon in 1984. I've been fighting gorse since 1984, and we live out on the bluff. And we, the first thing we did was remove the gorse from our property, but we were told at that time that we could not remove the gorse that went down the bluff. So, on the top, you know, where the house is and everything, it's perfect. I mean, I've got other plants, I've got a garden, I keep the gorse under control, it's a hedge along, you know, the ocean side, I keep it trimmed, keep it under control, and I've tried to keep the heights down. So, I'm not a fan of gorse, I mean, but we need some flexibility here. I mean, the other issues that people have raised, like, there are little animals that live in it. I see them every day. We have quail, we have bunnies, we've seen foxes in our area, I mean, some people don't like them, but the steepness of the bluff where we are is a concern. And the other issue that I haven't heard anybody mention yet is, what about the gorse that is not on private property? Who is going to take care of that?
That's all part of the plan, that's all gonna be part of the plan. They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna have different areas of Bandon will have plants, just like down there with Moore Mill, and they got all that area. There is a lot of people working behind the scenes.
What about the areas that are quote-unquote streets that are?
Those are rocks away, and they have to be, yeah, somebody's gonna have to take care of. Who? Whoever, whatever jurisdictions it is.
Unfortunately, this is gonna be a process, and having flexibility written in the code, unfortunately, is what we had, and we're trying to actually remove those again exemptions and still work with the property owner. We understand it has to be.
It doesn't say that. Don't put a specific exemption in then, just say that exemptions can be made if circumstances are.
No. You have to understand, we need to pass this, and order the county and us to work together in the urban growth areas, which is our biggest problem, is the donut hole.
Yeah, she doesn't live in the donut hole.
I don't live in the donut hole.
She wants us to put.
She's a county interviewer.
No, she wants us to put exceptions in.
If we put exceptions in, then the county's not gonna.
No, I'm not saying put an exception, I'm saying put flexibility in it. You're saying that there's flexibility, but that ordinance does not say anything about flexibility. It doesn't say anything about you're gonna be working with the property owners and developing an individual plan. It doesn't say that. You said that, but the ordinance doesn't say that.
We had, we had a joint meeting here a couple, last month, in March maybe, I don't know when it was, or May, and they talked about, this ordinance is just the framework. What they talked about were all of the, the different things, the ways to do, just like Will was talking, that we're not gonna remove the roots, we're gonna, I mean, there's a whole lot of ways that we're taking care, particularly to address bluff areas like where your property is. But if we don't get this ordinance, we have gone a year of talking about this, in fact, it's been more than a year before this got to our plate, and if we have a, it's only dry summer, and we have big fires out there, we're gonna wish that we had, we can't, we understand that the individual property owners are going to have problems, but we can't throw out the ordinance, we're just gonna have to hope that education will take care of it.
And just know that you still, citizens still have this process to come in and saying, "I'm having an issue with this, with this particular code." We do still have this process in place, so it's not.
From the ordinance, it sounds like the due process is you end up going to court over it.
No.
That's an interpretation, right?
No, that's just your interpretation.
Well, I wanted to ask Fred what his reaction was to this, and then how he was feeling about it, how it came together. And just at the time that I wanted to ask, Fred went for coffee.
I just heard about this yesterday. We got no notification, no, no formal notification of any kind. One of our neighbors just happened to hear about it and let the people on the Neighborhood Association know about it.
You live out in Sunset City, correct?
Yeah.
You're in Sunset City?
Yes.
That's in, well, that's the urban growth boundary, but you're not in the city limits.
Okay, we're in the urban growth boundary.
Right, but you're not in the city.
Fred, Plody has a question. I wanna know how you feel about this ordinance, and did you see it after it was completely finished?
This is what I see, this was in front of me, I don't know what you mean, completely.
Well, did you have a chance to review it and think through all the details, et cetera, because this is gonna be put in place?
I guess in answering your question, I've not been very involved in the creation of this ordinance, though.
Well, I would prefer to have Fred review it thoroughly before we vote on it.
What do you want to clarify?
That's what you want him to do after your answer.
Well, I've read it, I don't wanna say it.
Could I add one more thing? The county does not maintain the roads in our area. The homeowners association has to maintain it. If we're required to remove the gorse from some of those roads that go straight off out onto the beach, that area is full of gorse. We were always told that that became the state property at some point. So, there are issues like that that there aren't any answers to, and we, our Neighborhood Association hasn't been approached by anyone asking for any input or concerns, so.
If we don't get started, if we don't get started, we're not going to address the gorse issue. We have waited long.
I will say this about what I'm hearing about the rigidity versus discretion, enforcement versus flexibility. That is, that is quite frankly contained in any ordinance, even if it's not spelled out. If, go back, you're speeding down the highway, if the policeman decides not to chase after you, that's within discretion, you can't make the policeman go after you. If there's a violation, we're having this with building codes lately on some of our properties around here that are under construction. They choose not to enforce their code at certain times, okay? Whether that's because they're trying to encourage cooperation or not, I don't know. This ordinance specifically addresses the fact that it's primarily looking for voluntary compliance and education more or less. That frankly is a better foot forward than most ordinances that are trying to command something. For example, look at your nuisance ordinance, while it says we'll send out friendly letters, it basically is nothing but a heavy hammer haul through it. But I will confess, it's a trust me kind of a document, because you're working together with the county. And we can't assure people outside the city limits what the county's attitude is going to be, but we're trying to say we wanna play along with it. If it all went 90 degrees and bad, you would simply come back and change your ordinance in some fashion. But we, just to relieve her concern, we are, we do need participation from the property owners. This isn't gonna be a problem solved by the city ordinance, so this is just one step in that process.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move to the ordinance number 1631.
Your motion should be to pass ordinance number 1631 to a second reading. I'll be glad to read the ordinance. Ordinance number 1631, an ordinance amended chapter 8.08 of the Bandon Municipal Code, addressing vegetation and removing exemptions for gorse and other prohibited vegetation.
My motion is to move to the second reading. Second.
And this is a roll call, right?
Correct.
Right? Mr. Big?
Yes.
Rashad?
Aye.
Seymour?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 1631, an ordinance amended chapter 8.08 of the Bandon Municipal Code, addressing vegetation and removing exemptions for gorse and other prohibited vegetation.
Then the motion is to move to approve.
Adopt.
Adopt.
I make a motion to adopt.
Ordinance number 1631, clear.